You can need it.
Yeah.
Is it not working?
No, no, no. Okay.
Okay. It's a pretty good crowd. It's not too bad. Um.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yes?
Yeah.
Jeff? Bishop? I T?
T.
Oh, um. Can I get something?
No, no. Yeah.
Okay. Sorry. Um.
Yeah.
Wait, can you show me? Quick, quick? I don't know.
Yeah.
Somebody turn the computer on. You have started yet?
Counselor Corn. We are having some difficulty up at the mic at the front, so give us just a minute.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
Give him yours and you use this one.
That's fine.
Oh, gosh. You have some wipe? Okay. Everybody ready? One, two, three, four, five, six. Okay, I think if we can have the clerk call the roll, please.
For the record, we're beginning at six oh four.
For the record, it wasn't my fault.
Counselor Arnold.
Present.
Counselor Corn.
Here.
Counselor Foster. Counselor Best.
Here.
Counselor Oropesa.
Here.
Counselor Haldenbrand.
Present.
Counselor Halverson.
Here.
Counselor Moore.
Here.
Oh, good. How are you?
Counselor Sanchez.
Sanchez.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Okay. Uh. We've got a quorum. If we can, we'll, uh, have the Counsel Lady Halverson, if you'll help us with the Pledge of Allegiance, and we'll have a motion, moment of silent prayer by, uh, by Councilman Sanchez. And I would ask in your prayers that you, uh, remember today, three people who were very instrumental with the youth in the city of Roswell. And, uh, and one is Rudy Barola. Uh, he did an awful lot of youth activities here. Larry Hobson. Larry Hobson, uh, was real big in any of the agriculture things and things at the, at the fairgrounds. Uh, in the life, their family are lifelong supporters of youth here. And you know, somebody who was a really big help to all the legislators in all the cities and counties in southeastern New Mexico, and that's Hubert Quintana. Uh, Hubert passed away as well in, this last week. So if you all will keep all them in your prayers, uh, when we have it, okay? So first we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance by Counsel Lady Halverson and a moment of silent prayer by Councilman, uh, Sanchez.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and indivisible in its essence.
Come to come back today soon. I need you to come back every day, every day. I come to see you come back every day. I come and need you come back every day, that each day, each day. Uh, come back every day, come back every day. I love you, I love you, I love you, I love you. Come back, yes, I am a man, a man.
Amen. Okay, next we'll have reapproval of the agenda. Let's see, we have, uh, Counsel Lady Arnold. Is, or would you like someone else to do it?
Hi, Mr. No. Um, so I'm gonna, I, I'm getting a big kickback, so it's a good service. I move to approve the agenda for the 14th, 2023 regular city council with the following. For item twenty-six, the minutes from the regular city council meeting on August tenth, the O M A resolution number is wrong. It should read resolution twenty-three dash forty. Postponing item twenty-eight to the October twenty-twenty-three regular city council meeting. Item number fourteen, to be pulled from the consent agenda and be placed under new business before item thirty-two. Item number thirty-one, to be removed from the new business and put on the consent agenda. New business regular items will now read as items twenty-seven, twenty-nine, thirty, fourteen, and thirty-two.
Second.
Yep, so twenty. Okay, we have a motion by Counsel Arnold. Is there a second? By Counsel, second by Counsel, Lady Halverson? Is there any, uh, questions by any members of the council? Seeing none, the clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Arnold.
Yes.
Counselor Corn.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Best.
Yes.
Counselor Oropesa.
Yes.
Counselor Haldenbrand.
Aye.
Counselor Halverson.
Yes.
Counselor Moore.
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez.
Yes.
Motion passes nine to zero. Mayor and city councillors, for the record, um, Counselor Foster joined at six oh six.
Nine oh, or six oh six. Okay. Next, for approval of the consent agenda, I would just note that on the consent agenda that we have for approval today, I have no, no one in the audience signed up to speak on the items on the consent agenda. Is there anyone in the audience that wanted to speak on any of the items in the consent agenda? Seeing none? Okay, we have, uh, next for, uh, for item, uh, the approval of item two on the calendar for approval of the consent agenda, Counsel Lady Arnold.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion as same as above.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
And a second by Counsel Lady Halverson.
Don't forget to, I'm sorry, Mayor, to add the one that you took off back to the consent agenda in a minute.
Well, that.
Number thirty-one needs to be added to, so in the motion, make sure you say.
Well, that, okay. Item thirty-one.
That's what I say, back to consent.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, she's correct. Let me, let me correct that. I make a motion to approve the consent agenda noted same as above with, um, exception to item number thirty-one being added to the consent agenda.
Second.
So we have a motion, the motion has now been changed to add item thirty-one to the consent agenda, uh, and Counsel Lady Halverson, do you agree with that motion? Okay, so Counsel Lady, Councilman Haldenbrand.
No, Counselor.
Oropesa.
Oh, I'm sorry, Oropesa.
Which one are we putting back?
We're putting back on item thirty-one on the consent agenda. It's for, for the micro-surfacing, oil pavement maintenance to, uh, interstate pavement resurfacing for the amount of five hundred thousand dollars in grocery seat tax.
Mr. Mayor and councillors, it was approved to be placed on the consent, consent agenda at the last infrastructure meeting.
So this item, it was placed on, item thirty-one was replaced there instead of on the, uh, it was, the motion was made to place it on the consent agenda in the, uh, infrastructure committee, and so it was put in this place in error. It should be above the line, so that is why it's there. Is there any further, Counsel Lady Halverson, do you agree with that motion?
I agree.
Is there any further comments or questions on, on that by Councilman? Okay, the clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Arnold.
Yes.
Counselor Corn.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Best.
Yes.
Counselor Oropesa.
Yes.
Counselor Haldenbrand.
Aye.
Counselor Halverson.
Yes.
Counselor Moore.
Yes.
And Counselor Sanchez.
Yes.
Okay, by about nine, affirm even none the negative, it's, consent agenda has been approved. Next, we go to item three on today's calendar. We have an airport advisory commission update, and today we, we have, uh, a new presenter today that is on that commission and very active member. We have Mr. Sean Powell. Mr. Powell, would you please give us your, the airport advisory updates?
Certainly. Uh, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, thank you for the chance to present for you today. I am standing in for Bud Kunkel, who's unable to be with us this afternoon. Uh, I want to thank Terry Harbor of the Roswell Daily Record. I don't know if everyone saw the article on the airport that was on the front page above the fold this past Tuesday. It's a great, uh, overview of what's happening at the air center, and again, if you have a chance, I'd encourage you to read that. Um, the airport staff and administration has been hard at work this past month. Uh, the airport advisory camp mission met last week on September fifth, and seven lease arrangements and agreements were reviewed and approved. Additionally, we reviewed the operational policy and procedures for the Roswell Air Center. After discussion, a decision was made at table approving that policy and procedure manual until our next meeting to allow more time to review and get feedback from the commission members. Um, the commission also received a presentation on Sky from Stephanie Luongo regarding their current operations, and they do have plans to increase the operations in the future, including here at the Roswell Air Center. Um, several air center updates were also provided. Passenger boarding was reported, uh, for August at three thousand four hundred and forty-one departures. There were three thousand three hundred and eleven arrivals. Aircraft parking is currently at two hundred and sixteen aircraft. Also, the FAA grant for the holdbars, the final inspection of that was done August twenty-fourth. Also, South Hammerhead repairs are at a hundred percent completion, and then the master planning with Armstrong Engineering should be completed in about eighteen months, following an FAA review of that document. And then also, we discussed the auto hangar parking, uh, provided by Cayman Carter. They have a site visit planned this fall, and also, if you haven't been to the air center lately, uh, the passenger parking project in phase one is about eighty-six percent complete, and there's many more parking spaces than there were previously. I'd be glad to stand for any questions, if you have any.
Are there any questions of Mr. Powell on the airport? Uh, Mr. Powell, have we had any updates on our, the lighting, any of the lighting situations we have on, on?
We, we did discuss some of the lighting options. Um, I don't have those notes with me currently, but we can definitely provide those.
Okay. If you would, that would be great. Any further questions? Thank you much, uh, Mr. Powell.
Thank you.
And, uh, I might point out there, uh, Councilman Corn and Councilman Arnold are at the air show in, uh, Reno, the air races in Rito, Reno. Uh, and things seem to be going quite well for, for our team that we have there. We have a whole team there that can evaluate the situation at the Reno Air Show and come back and, so we'll know exactly what we're looking at, what they're expected to do if, if they happen to select us, uh, as the new site of the Reno Air Show. Uh, that is, it's a very large show, and it will be, uh, it should be a, quite a extensive opportunity for us in New Mexico, or in New Mexico and Roswell, uh, to, to showcase our aviation abilities here in our state. So I, that's, uh, we have a real good team there, and it's really going real well. Uh, next, we have, uh, Ms. Amy McGray-Tess.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Um, I'm just thankful to be here representing the Historical Society. Um, we want to give you some updates on great things happening, celebrating history. Um, first of all, I would just like to thank, um, the city council for the opportunity to allow the Historical Society to partner with, um, Councilwoman Christina Arnold and Ms. Halverson. Um, with their trip to Poland, we were asked to, um, add some of our blessings, um, to go to Poland, including a Peter Heard print and just different things on behalf of the history of Roswell. So, um, I have given packs, packets to each one of you, um, giving you an idea of what went to Poland, representing, um, the city of Roswell and history. We want to just update you on some great things happening here. Um, we want to remind the city council that Museum Day is Saturday. We're thrilled and honored to be saying Museum Day. Um, what an honor it is to work with all seven museums in Roswell. I've been with Historical Society for ten years, and I think this is our first, um, opportunity to all work together for the good, and I hope it's not the last. So we want to encourage, um, anybody that's able to attend between the hours of ten and five, every museum in Roswell be, will be open and available and partnering, and, um, we just think that's a great opportunity to celebrate all that Roswell has to offer. Um, some additional items in your packet are just events honoring history. We've got a Books and Blooms event coming up, our annual Heritage Dinner honoring Mary Lou Glass, um, the legacy of the white family that built our beautiful home. She recently passed, and we will be honoring her. Uh, Mayor, I appreciate you making note, um, and us honoring Larry Hobson. We too want to honor Larry Hobson. He was the two thousand and six recipient of the Heritage Dinner Award and certainly a pioneer of Roswell, so we certainly want to take that moment, too. Um, City Council, we just want to remind you of some of the great things happening at the Historical Society. We, um, continue to offer a service of our doors are open by appointment. What that means, and it's not a negative sentiment, it's a positive sentiment. If an individual needs a tour at seven o'clock in the morning, or they need one at seven o'clock at night, we welcome a private tour, morning, noon, and night, and we're offering those by a private tour. Um, so we're proud to open our doors to you. We would love to, um, offer a tour to all the city council. Um, other things we continue to do is partner with the Roswell Independent School District, offering annual fourth grade school tours. We offer that to over one thousand fourth graders to all public, private, and home schools. I think that's a great opportunity to have hands-on activities, celebrating the history of Roswell, and with no pun intended, we take them back when the lights did come on in our area, and there's some really great opportunities there. Um, we continue to partner on the preserving Chihuahua Wita Project. We continue to partner with the Chamber Visitor Center and Tourism Council, just wanting to offer any opportunity to celebrate the rich history of our community. I think that covers it, unless you have any questions. Um, we have packets for you, including a Peter Heard print. Um, we want to also thank the E D C. We've, um, embraced a golden opportunity to work with the E D C regularly, um, putting packets together, again, to anybody coming to Roswell, welcoming them and their events. If y'all have any questions, we'd be happy to.
Are there any questions of Ms. McVey? Next, we have Councilman Norpress, huh? You, you're on the list, did you want to speak? Oh, you're on over here. Counsel Lady Halverson, did you want to speak?
Yeah, I just want to thank Amy for all she does for the community. She does more than just historical museums, she does the Leadership Roswell and the Chihuahua Wita Project and Character Count, so you do a lot, and you stay very busy, and I just want to thank you for that.
Thank you. Thank you very much. It's, it's an honor.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any further comments?
Yeah.
Councilman Foster. Okay, you're back on.
My lights back on? All right. I just wanted to thank her, too. Um, I mean, she comes from a long line. I, I think. Um, I, I think we have a softball park named after somebody's dad here, and, um, wanted to thank her. She comes from a long line of people that have given to Roswell, and we, we thank her.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And I appreciate you honoring Mr. Barella and Mr. Quintana. I, I agree, too. Um, we honor legacies, and those are certainly legacies. We continue to lose individuals that are irreplaceable, if you will. So we, um, hope for the future generations that are the next Rudy's and, and Huberts for the future. Thank you very much for what you do. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. McVey. Okay. Next, we have, uh, city manager, uh, announcements and reports.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Uh, thank you. I want to, uh, extend another thank you to Dr. Sean Powell, EMUR. Uh, of course, we know they, uh, donated or transferred the locker assets, uh, and we recognize them for that last, um, council meeting, August 10th. Turns out, they, they had some, uh, additional furnishings and tables and, and things of that nature that, uh, uh, we could use, and, and so they did, uh, transfer those as well. More recently, uh, we've had some more, uh, HVAC and air conditioning problems, specifically at the airport. Uh, Dr. Powell and his team, uh, have lent us, uh, some air conditioning units for one of our buildings out there, uh, and, and we're working with them, uh, but they've come to our rescue again. So thank you to Dr. Powell, EMUR Roswell, uh, team. Uh, with that, I've got some, uh, minor housekeeping, uh, wanted to go through with regard to our ICIP list, um, that was approved at our August 10th, uh, city council meeting, uh, open to the public. Mayor Jennings, uh, city council members on August 10th, two thousand twenty-three, the city, at the city's regularly scheduled monthly meeting of its governing authority, resolution number twenty-three dash forty-three for the fiscal years of two thousand twenty-five through two thousand twenty-nine Infrastructure Capital Improvement Plan, or ICIP, including top five priorities for the current fiscal year, was adopted and subsequently submitted thereafter to the New Mexico Department of Finance Administration. Included in the city's top five ICIP projects was an estimated project cost of three hundred and fifty thousand in total for athletic field lighting, uh, reference item number three at the top of, uh, of the top five listing, uh, which further described field lighting improvements for all fields and parking lot lighting, um, at the Charlie McVeigh complex. After adoption and transmittal of the resolution twenty-three dash forty-three's top five ICIP list, staff notified the city manager that there had been a specific undetected transposition error pertaining to two of the ICIP projects listed for adoption at the August 10th council meeting. The error in, is reflected to estimate, uh, project costs pertaining specifically to the inadvertent reversal of requested projects number thirty-two and thirty-three from that ICIP listing, respectively. Uh, the cost estimates requested within the submitted and adopted ICIP listing for governing authority consideration at the August 10th meeting. Uh, Mayor Jennings, city council members, and Madam Clerk, I respectfully wish to note for the record that the amount of three hundred and fifty thousand, which was originally listed and adopted August 10th, twenty twenty-three, uh, and specifically in association with ICIP listed item number thirty-two for athletic departments, Athletic Field Lighting Project for field lighting improvements for all fields and parking lot, all fields and parking lot lighting at the Charlie McVeigh Complex, was inadvertently transposed with a dollar amount, uh, of the next listed item, which was item number thirty-three pertaining specifically to Styles Field Sports Complex improvements, which show, was shown to indicate an estimated cost of two point three three million dollars, um, and adopted within the ICIP listing. For clarification, as a result of detection of this transposition error, it should be noted that the estimated cost amount of three hundred and fifty thousand, if awarded, is not believed to be sufficient to fully fund all fields and parking lot lighting at the Charlie McVeigh Complex. However, it is believed, and in consultation with staff, that the three hundred and fifty thousand, as adopted, would be sufficient to address specific parking lot lighting located directly adjacent to the Charlie McVeigh Complex playing fields, visitors' parking areas. Thank you for allowing me to make this clarification there of record.
Okay, are there any comments? We had a error in the, in the amounts that were on the ICIP, so. Okay, thank you. Next, we have, uh, we have public participation for those items on the agenda, and today, per item twenty-seven, it's the skate park. We have, uh, some individuals for the skate park, four individuals, and one, two, three individuals for item twenty-eight. So for item twenty-seven, we have Tracy Huttersen? Is that right? Yeah. And that is the skate park.
Hello, thank you.
You have a, you have a three-minute time limit on this stuff.
Name and address. Okay. My name's Tracy Huttersen. Like many of you, I was born and raised here in Roswell, New Mexico. Um, I'm currently one of the instructors at the Roswell Adult Center for adult skate classes. And as a child, I played basketball. That was a huge part of my identity. I feel like Roswell really fosters that in our youth, in athleticism. When I became a mom, I lost that part of myself, and I didn't feel like an athlete again until I found roller skating and Roswell Roller Derby. For my kids, they are very much not the athletic sort, not for lack of trying. I've spent tons of money putting them in basketball, and football, and soccer, and baseball. Um, we've tried dance, we've tried everything, nothing has stuck for my kids. But when I started skating, that was something my kids were interested in, and it was a huge bonus that it was something we could do together. Now that the skate rink has been closed in Roswell since COVID, our skate park is in disrepair, the trails are not safe to foster learning of roller skating with my kids. I don't feel safe taking them to many of our trails, some of them I do. Um, there's no place to foster this form of athleticism in our youth. So I'm asking the city of Roswell and its constituents to support twenty-three forty-nine, and to vote yes for us to seek funding for a new skate complex, and really foster that form of athleticism in different kids. It's not always baseball and basketball. And basketball is close to my heart, I grew up loving it. It just didn't happen that way for my kids. So I'd like your guys' support in voting yes on resolution twenty-three forty-nine. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Next, we have Geneva Martinez.
Um, I also am here to encourage, um, everyone to vote for, um, the resolution twenty-three forty-nine. Um, as of now, um, our team has not asked for any city funding, um, and by soliciting funds through grants, um, would be beneficial, I think, um, because a lot of those grants are for, that we are looking at are for, um, quality of life, and, um, there's many foundations that are out, and we definitely need, would need somewhere to place this money to be a fiscal agent. Um, Christina Arnold has been great on being our facilitator, talking to, um, different contractors, and what it would look like to have the skate complex. Um, so I just wanted to say thank you for the time, and I'm glad it has already reached here so quickly. Um, I think we're above the ball, you know, and, um, with, with so much energy and excitement to see this happen, um, I can see, I can see the funding following it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, uh, Geneva. Next, we have Chrissy Smith.
Hello, my name is Chrissy Smith. Um, I have lived in Roswell for most of my life, um, and I have now raised two kids here, um, two sons, both teenagers. Um, I have been a part of Roswell Roller Derby since two thousand seventeen, um, and there I'm known as Crystal Skull. I know, sounds intimidating, but don't worry, I'm not mean. Um, in addition to Roswell Roller Derby, uh, sorry, Roswell Roller Derby, Derby, I also help instruct the adult skate class at the Roswell Adult Center. Um, and I have also helped coach the kids camp that we held this last summer. Um, we still get parents asking us when we're gonna do another kids camp. Unfortunately, we, uh, have no plans for that right now, because we just don't have a safe place to have, um, another kids camp, or even to practice for Roswell Roller Derby, um, to have bouts, for anything like that. The skate complex that, um, we're hoping to get built, um, would provide that space. It would give us space for, uh, the kids camps, it would give us space to have practice, to have bouts, um, even to do like a roller disco, if people are interested. Um, it would open up a lot of possibilities for us. Um, so I'm just here to, um, show my support for the resolution, uh, twenty-three forty-nine, um, and just, uh, support, um, for the complex to be built in general. Um, and I just want to thank y'all for, uh, helping this get through. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Chrissy. Next, we have Judith White. Judith White?
J, yeah.
Oh, sorry. Oh, I didn't see you back there.
Good evening, I'm Judith White, and I've come tonight to encourage you to vote for enlarging the skateboard park. It's an excellent sport, and to go out there and watch these young people, hear about how bad they are, well, they are so good, and they help younger children who want to start. It's a clean sport, and it's popular, and we hope that you will agree that they need a larger park. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. White. Do you have your address, so we can give that for the record?
Yes, yes.
Can you tell us your street address, so we can put that on the record?
You want my address?
Yes, ma'am.
Two seven oh, well, I've already given it.
Oh, did you? I don't know, I didn't hear it. What is, what is your street address, just to make sure we have it?
I can, we can't hear you, we really can't. So am I done?
Yep. You're done, we'll get with you, if we can get with her, if she, if you don't have her address.
I just want the skateboard park to be enlarged.
Yes, Ms. White.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who would care to speak about the skate park?
Yeah, uh, I think you have the last one.
Well, you didn't sign up, so.
No, I did, I'm on the very bottom.
Oh. Oh, well, she doesn't have her number, okay.
Yeah, sorry about that. So my name is, um, do, do I start?
Yep.
Name and address.
Okay. My name is Tori Hornick. I live at fourteen oh four West H Street. I am here to get your guys' support on the skate park addition. What we are asking for is a forty thousand square foot regional skate park. All, we're not asking for any funding from you guys at all. It would include modern, um, skate facilities, including the flat track, as they spoke about, a pump track for, um, longboards, BMXs, um, roller skates, skateboards. It's basically gonna cover everything. But more importantly, we're having, um, a company called Grind Lines, um, that, we've been talking to them, they're professional skateboard, uh, park builders, and, um, we have a lot of people working on this project already that want to help, and they are helping. We even had Tony Hawk share our petition just two days ago. We even got a picture of him holding up our shirt, he's wanting to support our, you know, what we're doing. And we also have been invited by Main Street Roswell to do a local skate demo for the Chili Cheese Festival, which we are doing. We've also contacted, you know, a couple, couple of the news companies to come, you know, watch what we're doing while we're out there. So it'd be really smart just to have everybody support what we're doing, because we're doing a lot of good things for these kids, and these kids have been ignored since I was a kid being at the skate park. I mean, there's been nothing until we started doing stuff out there, and it's awesome. Like, we have a lot of people who are stoked about this, and I really think you guys should just, you know, support us. I didn't make a speech today, because I've come up here every month and everything, but, uh, we also, we also started on a mural out there to clean up the graffiti, and hopefully that'll get the kids, because these are random kids that do not skate, that keep going out there. You know, their parents just drop them off at the adult center, or the, the aquatic center, then they come over, you know, just unsupervised, but there's, whatever they do, and they spray paint it up. And, you know, it happens, and we're trying to clean it all up right now, and it's gonna be, once we're done, it's gonna be a nice area. And, uh, we just really hope you guys want to support it. And thank you, that's all I have today. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Tori. Is there anyone else on the skate park? Any questions?
I have the last one.
Any questions from members of the council? I would just like to tell the skate park people, uh, my brother and I, our children all went to the skate park all the time, and there hadn't been anything done at that park in about twenty-five or thirty years. So, you know, it, we are ripe to do something for the skate park. Uh, there are some issues we have to still figure out how to address, and that's bathrooms, and, uh, we have to address that, and we're gonna have to, kids, you guys are all gonna have to help us keep the bathrooms from people tearing them up.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, you, you gotta help us, gotta keep drugs out of there and everything else. But we can do it, so I, I would, I appreciate you all coming. And on behalf of my children and my brother's children, we, they, we spent a lot of time there, so it's, it's a nice place. Thank you all very much. Uh, next, we have item, uh, for item twenty-eight, uh, and that's on the, the property that was over on College Street. I have, uh, Kim Harris. Yep, if you come up and, come up, Ms. Harris, and give your name and address, and, and state your, your feelings about this. This is the property that was, uh, we had put up for sale, uh, or, and, so we were approached by some, somebody who wanted to buy it, and it's over on East, East College.
Okay.
It's, it's been moved to the October meeting, but you all go ahead and bring that up now.
Yeah, so should we come back and talk in the October meeting, rather than tonight?
You can, but you can tell us now, you, that way you can tell us twice.
Okay, since I'm here. Um, actually, so, I guess I have a, it's, my name is Kim Harris, and I live at eight oh one Meadow Place. Um, and I've, God, I've been a resident here of Roswell for probably the last twelve-something years, so I've been here for a while, but, um, um, so, uh, I don't know if that's a question or a statement. So, um, I was doing, I was looking at the resolution that was passed in two thousand and six, um, that actually allotted the land for the Blackdom Memorial, um, and I was wondering, um, the city allocated and allotted this land, uh, in two thousand and six for the purpose of the memorial for Blackdom, that the Blackdom settlement. Uh, and instead of finding a way to move forward to fulfill the terms set by the resolution of two thousand and six, you're instead choosing to sell the land. Uh, my question is, how can you legally do that if the land was allotted through this resolution in two thousand and six? Um, was there a public hearing? Was there a city council or formal meeting, uh, formally, uh, notifying the public that this was going to be terminated, or what?
Madam, at that time, there was, there were some movements, I, I mean, I don't know who else was here in two thousand and six, but there was some movements, uh, about putting a memorial there for Blackdom.
Yes.
And I believe there was even some money appropriated.
Yes.
And there was, there were some groups of individuals who were there to work on putting that together, and it never came to fruition. And so now we're twenty-some years later, and, uh, you know, twenty-five years later, and, and the, uh, no one's done anything. And so I think, I believe the legislature appropriated some money, and then no one, the groups that were there to bring this memorial forward.
Yes.
Have dissipated. We haven't seen or heard of them in, in all those years, and, and that's what happened. I mean, it's, it's, they've gone away.
I, I'm not, I'm not well-versed on the subject, but from what I understand, that it says here that, um, the cost of the said memorial was going to be provided by the New Mexico State Legislature's, uh, capital outlay, outlay project funding, and from what I understand, that money was never made available. Uh, and there was a gentleman, I guess, who fought for years, I don't know his name, um, and he's.
Probably Reverend Abukasumo.
Yes, and the, and the money was still not received, so if the money... So, if the money, or the funding that was supposed to be provided, was not provided, then how can the people of the, provide?
They have, you have to go to the legislature and get the money.
They did.
And I, they did get some, but it was never, Reverend, the groups that were out there never came up with a plan on, on how to spend it. You know, and what kind of memorial to make. That's the way I remember it, I, you know, you know, I don't remember exactly, but I might even, might help fund it, so, so...
I'm sorry?
You have a three-minute time.
I'm sorry, okay, my, my time is...
I'll be glad to work with you and look on that, but what, it's, you know, just, nobody got together and came up with a plan how to spend the money, and I'm sure it reverted back to the state if there was any money given. I think there was two hundred and fifty thousand or something, but I, I'd have to go back and look, that's a long time ago. But I, you know, but if the money wasn't spent, if you don't spend it within two or three years, the legislature takes it back. So, I mean, that's, that's the way it is here. And I, I could have been part of the, could have been part of the money I appropriated too. But I mean, that was a long time ago.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, that's what happened, so, but we can look on that, pardon?
So, I'd like, I'd like...
Council Lady Best?
Yes, I'd like to make a comment. Besides the ordinance that you looked up, there's another one, and it's happened within the last eight years, and I cannot quote it or know what it is. But that needs to be looked up too, before the next October meeting, because we, I believe, if I'm correct, which a lot of times I'm not, we confirmed, and the gentleman, I cannot say his name, I'm sorry, he was here, and he was getting ready to start again. And we confirmed and condoned it. So, you need to look that one up too, and I'm not quite sure. You'll have to ask one of the clerks to help you find it. Thank you.
I believe it was Reverend Abukasumo was the, the moving factor.
That's him.
Abukasumo.
That's him.
That's right, I think.
That's him, yeah, I spoke to him.
Okay, next we have... Bart? Okay. We'll come back to her then. Let's see, twenty-eight, twenty-eight. We have Blackdom Memorial's twenty-eight, okay. Is there anyone else that, well, is she coming back? We had two...
Did you sign up?
We had two to sign up that I have.
Ms. Madden signed up.
Ms. Madden, did you sign up? Okay, this, okay, well, it doesn't have... Yeah, okay. Ms. Madden, your item twenty-eight, would you?
She can't walk.
Would you, maybe we could get the...
Thank you.
Thank you. Get the microphone to her.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Anna Douglas Madden, and this pertains to the Blackdom Memorial Garden. I am a granddaughter of Lloyd and Ethel Allen, Blackdom pioneers. According to the U.S. Parks Bureau and other resources, Blackdom, New Mexico was the most important Black homesteader colony in the state. It was located approximately fifteen miles south of Roswell. The town was incorporated in nineteen oh three by thirteen African-Americans from southern states. This group formed the Blackdom Townsite Company, consisting of forty acres of land with ten thousand dollars in combined assets. Frank Boyer was named the group's president. Blackdom, the Blackdom area's exact population is unknown, but U.S. land patent records indicate that there were over one hundred and fifty farms, encompassing either one hundred and sixty, three hundred and twenty, or six hundred and forty acres each. At least twelve women homesteaded several on their own. Okay, severe weather by the nineteen twenties had so impacted the area that the residents began to leave. Blackdom began to empty out in the nineteen twenties. The community of Blackdom did not survive the Great Depression. The Blackdom residents who left that area and relocated to Roswell in time established churches and businesses to meet their needs. The twenty twenty-three estimated black population of Roswell is thirteen hundred people. One of the churches that they established was the Washington Chapel African Apostical Church. It was pastored for many years by an activist named Reverend Abukasumo. He was the founder and leader of the Afro Gospel Praise Experience and much more. This reverend was active in bringing about the Blackdom Memorial Foundation that was to consist of four phases. A memorial garden, a museum, a restaurant, and an African import shop. It has been indicated that in two thousand and four, New Mexico's governor, Bill Richardson, and the legislator earmarked two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for the foundation. But those funds were never received. The only situation honoring black accomplishments and history is the marker that was erected in two thousand and two from capital outlaid by the city of Roswell. Meanwhile, the Blackdom Townsite and its existing thirteen landowners are landlocked out of their property, as well as a number of other black families who have paid taxes on their Chevys County property for over one hundred years. On February ninth, two thousand and six, the Roswell City Council passed Resolution Number zero six zero eight, dedicating a tract of vacant land as the site for the Blackdom Memorial. Therefore, you are herein requested not to dispose of the property, nor allows it to be utilized for any other purpose other than that adopted by the council and Mayor Bill B. Owen on the aforementioned date. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else that would care to speak on this item? The, some of the things I know, I think, I don't remember that the city of Roswell placed any plaques or anything in it. There was, there is a plaque placed out on the highway, because I know I sponsored that four or five times. To put the plaque out on the highway, you know, at, at the rest area out there by, by Blackdom. And I know it was vetoed three or four times, as I recall, by Governor, I guess it was Governor Johnson. But we finally got that plaque in out there at, at the rest area that's out there. The, and I, you know, I, if, if you want to save that, I think we need to get some people together to come up with some kind of a plan, rather quickly, or a group together that could, would work, so we could see what, what we construct or do with Blackdom. I thought there was some money that was given, and it was never, it was never, it was never used. And I, that's the way I remember it, I, I could be wrong, but I, I know that that, Reverend Abukasumo and Washington AME Church were very active in that, Justice Bo, and I have a very close lady who helped raise all our children, Sally Austin, was a chap, was a, was a chapel there, named after Sally Austin, at the Washington AME Church. And so, I, I have, I have a lot of feelings about that, but we're gonna have to have some kind of activity. If, if, if anybody wants to save that, or not to put it to some other use, we've got to figure out some plan of action to do something. And so, I, it's a challenge to you all to, to come forward. You're gonna have to get some groups together and see who you can get to talk about it, because it's been a long time with no activity, and we need to have some. And I, Reverend Abukasumo was, was really good about getting people together and working, but we're gonna have to find a new reverend, or someone to take his place, so...
Can I say something really quick?
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Moore.
I know we have taken this off of the agenda for this evening, and so, so next month will be a hearing, not a hearing, what's that called? So, next month we'll be talking about, it'd be an, it'd be a hearing where everybody gets to say, have a conversation
That's right.
for next month. So, we had some ideas, we had been spoken, I actually spoke to Justice Bo, and I spoke to Abukasumo, and I spoke to one of the other gentle and another historian on Blackdom. We were kind of, not necessarily, not just that it happened so fast. Most of us didn't know anything about this, and now it was on, so for sale. So, I was glad that they pulled it off, because we didn't really have much information. And then it was up for sale all of a sudden. And so, we were kind of thinking, if necessarily, if that property was going to be used for something, I don't know what they were buying it for, then if the city could donate something else, if they needed to sell it, and we needed the money or something for, is what, and we were all in the conversation that I had with everybody, that it wouldn't necessarily be that it's that property, as long as they, if we can replace the property, wouldn't be such a bad thing about selling it. We still like the idea of having the memorial, and it's not a plaque outside, it's a big old thing out, out by the highway. That if you go out there, ninety-nine percent of the time, it's tagged with all kind of racist information, but it's still out there. Because we go out there yearly for our Juneteenth stuff, so it's always tagged with all kind of ugly things. But we do think whoever planned that, I even got an account of information with Adair, that's who they told me to talk to about the funding. I guess he was the one put in for something, some money or something. That was a name they gave me that might have some information about why we didn't get the funding, or where it went, or whatever. So, I'm okay not having, talking about this anymore, that we can move on, since we're gonna have a whole public hearing on, on next month about this, and hopefully some further information about what they plan and to build, and so on and so forth. That could kind of weigh on some of our decision and discussion about this, ma'am.
Yes, now, in that what happened, someone, a company offered to buy that property for a price, and that's what happened, that's where nobody set out to do anything, that price was offered up for sale. Wasn't, it was, they offered to buy it, and we had, you know, there hadn't been any activity on that property, so that's what, how it came up before the council, so everybody knows. But I'd be glad to sit down, let's sit down, see what we can work out. Be all, be glad to do it, as far as I'm concerned.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, okay, thank, that's, that's for, that completes, completes the list of people that you're gonna speak on our agenda items. And so, next, let's see, we have ordinance number five, ordinance twenty-three dash ten, to hold a public hearing to consider the adoption of a, ordinance number twenty-three dash ten for municipal grocery receipts tax for ambulance, ambulance services and public health, or public safety. So, Councilman Hildebrand.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we hold a public hearing to consider adopting ordinance twenty-three dash ten, adopting a municipal grocery receipts tax for ambulance service and publicly, public safety needs.
Second.
Was that second by Council Lady Best? What was, oh, was you, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't hear it. Okay. So, now we have a public hearing, so is there, anyone who would request to speak has to be sworn in, as I recall? They don't? No, just a public hearing, okay. Okay, Councilman Hildebrand.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Now, the ordinance, as it was in the packet, is not the ordinance that, it needs to be substituted.
Mr. Mayor, Councilor Hildebrand, yes, there was a substitute that should have been printed out and made available to the counselors. The change is in the dedication, the dedication in the substitute reads, "To provide an ambulance system in good repair and to pay legitimate expenses of its operation. All remaining funds shall be expended for Roswell's public safety needs."
And that's on lines thirty-two to thirty-eight on the first page of ordinance twenty-three dash ten that has been placed at your desk. Council Lady Best?
So, we had a workshop on this on Friday the eighth. We were a little slow getting started, we had to wait about fifteen minutes to get the go-to meeting up, so the public could listen to the workshop. This is a public hearing, so I personally think, in my world, that the public should have had this new resolution before tonight, because not a single public person has been able to read this. It's not redlined, so we don't know, we can't compare it to the old one. So, I feel that's a problem. I want to make a short amendment. I was gonna make a long one on the other one, but this one, because it wasn't changed. So, this one, I would like to make a short amendment on line thirty-eight B. "All remaining funds shall be put into a special public safety fund for safety and medical equipment and vehicles." That is, from what I understand, we had at the workshop. That is also Roswell public safety needs, but that is not saying that it will be put in a separate fund, which we asked for. And if I remember right, in the workshop, we asked for it to be used specifically for vehicles, equipment, and safety material. Because your ambulance service is gonna have to have a lot of regenerating equipment, such as your oxygen, your zapping machines, whatever you call them, your, your machines. They all have to be only so old before they are kicked out of the system. This is gonna be a very high-dollar situation. I believe before the old was changed over to semi-new, I believe that there were three other counselors besides myself that felt there should be a sunset clause. I haven't heard anything about that. I actually think we should postpone this till October, so we can get a better handle on this, because I still don't think some of your numbers are right, but that's my opinion. So, again, I am putting up a amendment that reads, "All remaining funds shall be, shall be put into a special public safety fund for safety and medical equipment and vehicles."
Second.
So, Ms. Arnold seconded by my amendment. So, that tells me it will not be removed, there's no sunset clause, so it will not be removed from that fund that it's ear-tagged for, and go back to general fund. It will strictly go to the fire department, police department, and ambulance service is first, if you want to go in order. So, A would be ambulance, B would be fire, and police service. And am I making myself clear? Does everybody understand where I'm going? So, I did have a second.
We have a motion and a check to, to amend that. Clerk, Ms. Madam Clerk, did you get the wording on that? Okay, so, okay, is there any further discussion? Councilman Foster?
Thank you, Mayor. And Counselor Corn had a, best, Corn best had a, I do remember that when we, we separated the golf course, the museum, and the zoo into different funds, I'm almost thinking we, for this, we're gonna have to create an account, or create a fund specifically, and I'm not sure if it should be in the wording of the ordinance.
So, the five-sixteenths will go strictly to that fund? So the five-sixteenths will go strictly to that.
So that, that it's specifically for that. I'm not.
If it doesn't go there, I'm not voting.
I, it'd be a more of an accounting issue, I think, but.
Mr. Mayor, Counsel Foster, yeah, that'd be an accounting issue, wouldn't, the fund doesn't change the legal sufficiency of how the ordinance is presented.
But we, but we had to, in the resolution, create those accounts somehow.
Right.
So I maybe further.
Yeah, budget's done by resolution, this, this is earmarking, so even if it were in a public safety fund, it would be earmarking it further, actually.
Okay. All right. So, so Janie, is that, I mean, what would we need to be doing after, if, if we, once we pass this, cause that's what I was trying to figure it out for the accounting purpose.
Once it's approved, if you all approve it, then I think we would go in and make a special fund, whether it be called public safety or whether we do an ambulance, because on DFA's recommendation on how you set up your accounting strings, they consider an ambulance an enterprise fund, so if we go in and set that up, but I agree, it would not be difficult at all to set up another fund to set the remaining portion of that in for public safety, and I think it would be a public safety fund.
Okay. All right. Is that rain? All right. Sorry, sorry, we have to praise rain when we hear it. That's a lot of rain, too, so, yeah.
So, so if, if we have to set the way it is now for public safety needs, when, when it, when we pass this the way it is, it would still, it would all be in a separate fund for public safety, so the intent would be carried out if we pass it the way it is.
Yes.
So I, I, I think that that would, that would mean that we don't need the amendment, because it's gonna be, because of the way this is structured now, it would be all put in a fund for, for public safety now, the way this, this ordinance that we have now is, is stated. That's hail.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, that's, that's our understanding as well, that it would go into a fund for public safety, with the priority being the ambulance service costs first.
So I, I really, just from the way I understand, we don't need that amendment, because it's already covered under the accounting, the way the bill is drafted, because it will be all for public safety.
Mayor.
Yes. Council Lady Moore.
I, I know she didn't mean it in a bad, but I think it just sounds more professional and sounds more specific the way she said it, it's not necessarily that it's anything different, I think the wording is just more professional, the way that, that's the way she worded it, doesn't mean that it's wrong, just, you know, some of the words changed around, or doesn't mean it's that bad, it's, so don't, I don't, don't take it like, I don't think it's mean like, like that we need to change it, but the wording sounds better, the way that it was worded, if that's, if that sounds, I don't know, it's not like a big deal to change four or five words, it's not like, it's not changing the intent, is what I'm saying, right? It doesn't change the intent. It does change the intent?
Count, Councilman.
All remaining funds shall be put into a special public safety fund for safety and medical equipment and vehicles. That means it can't be shuffled around for other things.
But what about wages and things like that?
It cannot be used for wages. I'm sorry, guys, because that comes out of the general fund, so it can't be used for wages, it's to get oxygen, bandages, all the stuff, I mean, you're gonna reimburse yourself anyway, cause it is an enterprise fund, that's what it does, but this is gonna pile up, so when you need a new ambulance, it's gonna be there, when you need a new police car, it's gonna be there, it's not gonna be proofed off somewhere else or slid under the table to go somewhere else. It is strictly going to be there to provide our safety folks with vests, tasers, you know, we're still gonna go for the grants, these will go with the grants, stuff like that, it will be there for them, which in turn is for our citizens, because our citizens are important to us, especially ambulance, especially fire and police, that's the main foundation besides our worker bees that keep the water going and all that. So, it's strictly for the public safety to rebuild, and I wanna make sure all five-sixteenths of that tax money goes to our public safety. I don't want it sliding over into the general fund. It has happened in this city before and it was a little bit, back in the day of the flag at the cemetery, that money ended up going in general fund, wasn't supposed to, but it did. I don't want that same thing, I want the ordinance to read that the five-sixteenths, and I did not put that in there, the five-sixteenths, goes to those specific items. Now, if they don't like it later on, they can change it. I'm not running again, so.
Does it also include these totals in here, does it include insurance? I didn't see that anywhere, did I miss that, I missed the meeting, so, did they discuss how the expense of insurance is included in these total, I didn't see like a.
Councilman Hildebrand.
I didn't get that packet.
Oh, oh.
Okay, okay, go ahead.
Excuse me, Count, Mayor, Council Arnold is on the list.
Hold on, can we do, Council Lady Arnold?
I think I was on board.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, ma, Council Helmet, Hildebrand then.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'll address those. What it's gonna take, our first year of operation for this ambulance service is three point seven million dollars.
I remember that.
And that includes wages, that includes startup costs, it includes all the equipment. So, if you just take this money from this tax and say it can only be used for equipment, the, the equipment cost in this first year of operations is one point six million dollars.
It says all remaining funds.
So, you're gonna fall short, if you, if you don't allow all these funds to be used for the, for the ambulance service startup, you're gonna be short by over two million dollars. If you don't, that you're gonna have to get out of the general fund. That money is gonna have to come from the general fund, if you restrict this just to the equipment and the.
No, it was, you're talking about remaining money, though, that's after.
No, what she's saying is, no, that.
All remaining funds.
That money will be used for equipment only.
Remaining.
This provide an ambulance service in good repair and pay for legitimate expenses of the operation, that's three point seven million dollars, first year.
All remaining.
That's what it's gonna take, there won't be any money left, after the first year of operation.
Correct.
And you're gonna have to support this ambulance service every year.
Mm-hmm, that's where the five-sixteenths.
Every year it's gonna have to be supported. So you put the money back in just for public safety to go where it needs to go, which we have, you have not included dispatch in there as all, dispatch needs to be included, that's part of public safety.
Mm-hmm.
And, so this way, if, the way this is written right now, those funds will go for public safety in total, whether it's wages or whatever, what her amendment is saying is, it will not go for wages. Is that not correct?
That is correct, and that's what we agreed on in the workshop.
Nope. We didn't agree on anything there, because.
Because I made the, again, our workshops don't ever seem to make much, because again, I asked about it, and I asked about them coming and saying, will they affect this fund? And you said, no, they will not, because that comes out of the general fund, that's what I was told in the workshop, that all employees' money comes out of the general fund along with the fire departments. That's why I said, that's why I did this, all remain, all remaining, underlined remaining, funds shall be put into special public safety funds for safety and medical equipment, such as tasers, vests, oxygen tanks, needles, whatever else that the, what they collect on it can't be regenerated, and vehicles. You're gonna need ambulances consistently, I believe he said every five years, if I'm right, Mr. Folkerson, every five years you've got, Fuller, I'm sorry, every five years, I'm thinking of my air conditioner, sorry, every five years you've got to regenerate this equipment, and you've been complaining at us that we are not saving enough money to regenerate police cars, fire trucks and so forth, you said that in the workshop. So this is your opportunity to take the five-sixteenths and earmark it strictly for those equipments, medical and safety equipment that these men and women need to do their jobs. It'll be easier on the general fund in the long run, if this is earmarked strictly for this. I understand the, what the startup is, you're still gonna have to come up with more money, this says, "All remaining funds." So if you get your five-sixteenths, or your five-sixteenths collected this year and you have two billion left over, that two billion goes over to cars and ambulances and vests Am I, am I not getting through to people? Do I need to add something, Mary? Am I not getting through? It's English, I promise.
Mr. Mayor.
Council Lady Arnold.
Actually, I wholeheartedly will support Council, Councilwoman Corn Best's concept. I spent six months fighting for the environmental tax to actually go to infrastructure for our sanitation and water department, one of the things that actually really annoys me is that while we may have the best intentions, we can't, we can't determine what the future councilors are gonna do and verbiage, it's very important to make sure that funds are appropriated properly. So, I get, I get everybody's side point, but I, I would like it specifically verbally allocated, and I appreciate Councilwoman Corn Best's efforts to make sure that that is done, because if we have a history of just taking money from general funds and enterprise funds and putting them all over the place, so I, I would like any form of verbiage. If you don't necessarily agree with her, make some suggestions, but I would like it allocated, and that is why I seconded it.
Thank you, Councilman Foster.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I do believe with, with the added of the verbiage, it's still, the, the first part says, "To provide an ambulance system in good repair and to pay legitimate expenses of its operation," so that's first, and so the startup of it, that would cover the salaries for the first year. Now, the second year, it might not, but the second year, we should be operating to the point where it's at least paying for the, the salaries, we should be collecting something back. But it's saying for the setup, so once it's set up and running, it would pay, this would pay for it, because those were legit, I mean, I, I would think salaries are legitimate expenses, and it's setting up the operation, and it's setting it up, so the first year it, it gets it there, and then it should be complying on its own by then, if not, there can be tweaks later on, but I think with that verbiage, it's still, it's still, will do the job of what we're looking for. I yield.
And there's no one, uh, might I just point out one thing, that when you look at where we are in our budget and everything now, and when we went from a hundred and sixty-five thousand to two million, two and a half million dollars on this, is what their new contract is, if we, we have, already have a fire department that's in and it's funded, and that's where some of these officers, where we might have some savings, because some of the officers, fire, firemen might be able to provide some of these summer services, but where we move, when we move to acquire, assuming that AMR, we get some of the employees from AMR, and if we don't have a way to fund the, as new employees, we're either gonna have to reduce firemen, or we're gonna have to cross-train people, or not assume the quality of services, which I think everybody believes AMR was providing a quality service, I mean, that's what's the testimony there, if we don't have a way to fund those people that transport from A, transfer from AMR, then if you don't allow these funds to be used for salaries, then what is that gonna do? That's gonna put the city in a place where we can never get back in to line next year on, on coming up with some of the employees that got a very small raise this year, very small pittance, they won't be able to get a raise next year either, because we're gonna be committed, that we have to place all those salaries that come in here from anybody that trans, transports over from AMR, we're gonna have to pay their salaries, you know, out of the general fund. And so, that's gonna doom the employees that didn't get much of a raise this year, it will doom them next year as well, and I, I think we need to look at that, the way this thing is structured now, we can make it through, it's gonna take everybody working together to make it through, to, to mold the employees that are working with AMR, as we work to mold both of those systems together, as we work to do that, we're gonna need some flexibility on, on salaries to move those people in, because all those salaries are gonna have to come out of the general fund, and that's gonna doom all our, our sanitation workers, water workers, and all the other workers that we have that are funded out of the general fund, those individuals, we're gonna be short on, on giving them a raise, so it's real important that you give this, the, the ability to work on the salaries and pay the salaries in this, so we can have an orderly transition from AMR to the fire department. And, you know, they're, they're all have different schedules, and, you know, the firemen are on one schedule, we're, you know, so many hours off, so many hours on, and this would be, in blending that together, we're gonna need the flexibility to, to pay the salaries as well, or else our sanitation workers and stuff will never get a raise next year, unless we see where there's gonna be a lot of money coming. And so, it's, it's real important, I think, that we leave this exactly the way it is, so we have the flexibility to keep all the money in public safety and transfer, get those workers, get everyone over to, to maintain the quality level of services we have from AMR, and bring them over in the fire department, and manage that merger together. I think that was what most of the testimony we had was about, there, there are tremendous needs each ambulance, when we went through all that, six, well, we have six or eight ambulances, six on regular duty and two ambulances for transport, and those are extremely expensive. So we need the flexibility to move this up, and you know, it's a long time, if we don't get this, this schedule passed and sent to San Fe by the twenty-ninth, you're gonna delay this until July of next year, as I recall, so we will not get any tax increase for six months, which puts the health and safety of this community and our ambulance work, it puts us in jeopardy. And I, I think it's very important, when you look at that, I think if you look at the, the, if you look at anybody who provides services out there in medical transportation, they are, their financial picture doesn't look real bright in the stock market, because of the poor reimbursement levels that come back under Medicaid and Medicare, and that, that, you know, you're, we're playing with, gambling with the safety of the ambulance services and the people in our, in our community, that, that's what we're gambling on here, and give the staff the ability to merge these, AMR and the fire department together and figure out how, if the AMR crew's gonna be on the same schedule as the fire department, or if they're gonna have their own schedules, give them the opportunity to figure out how to work together to save, you know, to keep quality levels of service in, 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 in Roswell. That's why, why we, we need to leave this ordinance exactly the way it is, or else the next thing you know, we're gonna be into July before we get anything, and by that time, it's gonna be a real tough deal to make all this stuff work. So I would hope. So I would hope, I believe Ms. Davis, what day do you have to have this into San Fe? The 28th or 9th?
The 29th. I have to submit by the 29th.
If it's not in here, if we don't pass this tonight, on the 29th, just as the way, if we don't pass it, then we are not gonna be able to collect any money until after July. And that, that will kinda almost doom us to failure. In my opinion. You know, I mean, we're not gonna be able to have a quality ambulance service in our fire department. Councilman Foster.
Thank you, Mayor. I will reiterate what I said before, the doom and gloom that I keep hearing from you. The fact is, this sets up that it pays for the ambulance service, especially for the setup. So it would pay for, for reading this, Mr. Eintima, even with the adage of the, for Part B, for the parts, or for, to make it infrastructure and capital. But for the first part, the setup of an ambulance service and its legitimate expenses, are salaries legitimate expenses?
Yes.
So this sets it up.
Depends how good the salaries are.
Yeah. So this helps the ambulance service. It'll pay for the salaries. We're not gonna end up having to pull everybody else's raises for next year. This will do it if it makes enough money, if we get it in from the actual tax, and we have enough from it. We can pay for the first year's salaries. But what it's saying is, in future years, it should be an enterprise fund of itself, and it should be helping. And this money can go towards infrastructure or capital improvement for our other public safeties that generally, we end up having to pay for out of the general fund. And so the added words don't hurt this at all. I don't see it.
Counsel Lady Halverson. Oh, excuse me, Counsel Lady Hildebrand. Yeah, we're working on it.
Well, I'm working on that. Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I believe if we just let this go the way it is, so that we make sure that we have the funding in place, and you can address those issues after we know what our full costs are gonna be. This is all new business for us. And if you wanna come back after we've got this thing funded, see how it operates, and then if you wanna restrict funds, then you can restrict funds. But my feeling is, let this thing go, and let's get going, and not try to tie the hands again of the administration who runs these things. They know how best to present the budget. And if it's a budget problem you got, they've gotta present the budget to us, and we've gotta approve it. So my feeling is, just let it go, and come back in a year or two after this thing's been funded to make sure you've got all the funds necessary. And if you wanna restrict it, talk about it at a later date. But I'm tired of tying this hands of the administration and the employees who make this thing happen. And I stand where this thing is written now. Leave it. And if you wanna revisit it after you know exactly what you brought in the door, then that's okay. Let's revisit it at that point in time. But put some trust and faith in a city manager, in the fire department, who's gonna put this thing together and let them do their job, and we can come back and look at it a later date. I yield my time. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Lady Halverson.
Counsel Arnold is wanting to speak.
Okay. Counsel Lady Arnold.
Mr. Eintima, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Eintima, question. Could it also be said that if this amendment passes, it could be changed at a later date, and this could be removed if it ties the hands of the council, of the city administration?
Counsel Arnold, yes, that is accurate.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to call for the amendment vote.
Well, we have other items, or on the, other individuals who would like to speak. So it's not, you shouldn't debate and then call for the amendment.
Well, I'll call for the question.
If you're not. Counsel Lady Halverson. All right. You see, we draw us. Okay, so we have a call of the question for, or would you make that again? Since it shouldn't be made. No, you can make it, just make it again, if you wanna call for the question.
Oh, I'm calling for the amendment question to add the terminology that was made by Denise Corn Best and seconded by Ms. Arnold, Counsel Arnold.
Okay, and so, and this is for the amendment. Okay, and would you, the clerk would read the amendment again?
So the amendment reads, sorry. The amendment reads, "The remaining funds shall be put into a special public safety fund for safety and medical equipment and vehicles."
For equipment funds, right?
That is correct. For medical equipment and vehicles. Let me read it one more time. "The remaining funds shall be put into a special public safety fund for safety and medical equipment and vehicles."
Medical equipment and vehicles. Does that allow salaries if it's, when you specify it, equipment, funds, and vehicles?
That would exclude South Bruce.
So, pardon?
Your A, in your, "to provide for an ambulance system in good repair and to pay legitimate expenses of its operation." Counselor Foster asks if legitimate expenses included salaries in the beginning of this startup. And yes, it does. "In its operation, of its operation, to provide an ambulance system in good repair and to pay legitimate expenses of its operation." "All remaining funds shall be put into special public safety fund for safety and medical equipment and vehicles." That's for all three public safety funds. Fire department, ambulance service, and PD. And dispatch, excuse me. We'll add dispatch to that.
So if...
So you've read it.
All legitimate expenses, you know, there's not a definition of legitimate expenses, but, so...
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. There are two procedural issues. First, the amendment, so what's on the floor right now? The amendment hasn't been moved. So Counselor Best's amendment to the amendment isn't quite proper yet.
Because you'd have a amendment on the floor.
Because there's no motion on the floor to begin with, and there's a subsidiary.
Ms. Eintima, do we need to take a vote for the call to the question? Is that correct?
That's what I'm trying to... So what would have to happen is, somebody would need to move and second the presented amendment, and then Counselor Best's amendment to that can be taken as friendly, or would need a vote.
I had, we had Counselman Hildebrand move for the amendment and seconded by Counsel Lady Halverson to start with.
He moved for the, what was initially in the agenda. So he would have to substitute this.
Mr. Chair. I would like to make a friendly amendment to Counsel, Counsel Woman Corn Best's suggestion of adding dispatch. I believe that's what she was trying to add. I'd like to make a friendly amendment.
We can't do that yet. We need to get, if, if we did not, we, I announced we were discussing this new amendment that was registered. So we would, what we have to do first is to make, we have to have a motion to make the handed-out ordinance 23-10 substituted for the printed copy of Amendment 23-10 in our book. So, well, we have never passed, we're back on the original one to start with. We have to get it off, and then we're here. And then we can amend this. Okay, so the chair would entertain a motion to adopt ordinance 23-10, or substitute ordinance 23-10 that was handed out for you, for item number five in your books, which was ordinance number 23-10. That would be substituted for that ordinance. Okay? And I would ask for a motion by Counsel Lady Halverson, seconded by Counsel Perry, or, excuse me, Foster. Okay, okay, so that's your motion for Counselman Hildebrand, and seconded by Counsel Lady Halverson. Okay? To substitute the handwritten copy for the one that was in our book. Okay, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, who was opposed? We had Counselman Corn.
Can we do a roll call vote, please?
Corn and Arnold. Okay, so that's by a vote of seven to two.
I didn't oppose this thing.
Can we do a roll call vote, please?
Okay, we'll call, clerk will call the roll. This is on item 23-10, on substituting it.
Okay, Counselor Arnold?
Yes.
Counselor Corn?
Yes.
Counselor Foster?
Yes.
Counselor Best?
Yes.
Counselor Oropesa?
Yes.
Counselor Hildenbrand?
Aye.
Counselor Halverson?
Yes.
Counselor Moore?
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez? Motion passes nine to zero.
Okay, so it's nine to nothing on substituting. Now we're on this motion that is a hand copy in your book. So now, the, we had, we have a motion on the floor to change it as, the clerk, if she would read that. And I would ask that it be, if it, does anyone have any problem adding the word dispatch in the appropriate place in this bill? In this motion, Ms. Ordinance?
Is this to add dispatch, or is this to add the?
No. Just, if you have, if you had, if no one has an objection to adding dispatch, then we can add that to the amendment that we had proposed before. Okay? Does anyone have an objection to adding dispatch in there? As a public safety item? Okay? So you can place that in the appropriate place? Adding dispatch, okay, in the motion? The next motion that comes up, if you would reread Counsel Lady Corn's amendment in there, and you would also have to include dispatch in the proper place in this bill. Okay?
Okay, so then it would read, "All remaining funds shall be put into a special public safety fund for safety, medical equipment, vehicles, and dispatch." One more time. "All remaining funds shall be put into a special public safety fund for safety and medical equipment, vehicles, and dispatch."
Okay. Well, dispatch could also be, I don't know if dispatch is, if they're talking about mechanical equipment in that, you know, that, it doesn't, but it's probably all right making horseshoes. Yes, Counselman Corpressa.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would think, and anybody can correct me if I'm wrong, but by default, dispatch should be considered a safety, without having to spell it out, I think it should be known already that dispatch should fall under the safety.
Mr. Mayor, Counselor, dispatch is redundant.
Public safety. It's all encompassing.
Okay, then we would take dispatch out? Leave it out, and we're back to the original motion? If the clerk would read it? So is there any disagreement in taking dispatch out? Okay, then we shouldn't have put it in. Okay. Don't be silent if you have an objection. All right. So, okay, we have, if the clerk would read the motion, the amendment one more time without dispatch in there.
So the amendment would read, "All remaining funds shall be put into a special public safety fund for safety, medical equipment, and vehicles."
So, is there any questions? Is that, would you read that again? It just gets into...
"All remaining funds shall be put into a special public safety fund for safety, medical equipment, and vehicles."
So, we, okay, is there any further discussion on that? That motion was made by Counselman Corn and, Corn Best, and seconded by, who? Arnold, Counsel Lady Arnold. Counsel Lady Halverson.
So I agree with Counselor Hildenbrand that I think we're tying the hands of our staff when we do things like this. But for the sake of this passing tonight, because I know there's a time constraint, and I'm afraid if I vote no to the amendment, that they will vote no to the ordinance. So for the sake of, you know, getting this passed, I'll vote for it. But I think it's absolutely ridiculous what's going on here right now. Myself, my personal opinion, this is, this is just crazy. But I just, I agree with Counsel Foster too that we can cover the salaries in Section 4, line 35. That's just my opinion.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, on a motion by Counsel Lady Best, seconded by Counsel Lady Arnold, the clerk will call the roll.
Counsel Arnold?
Yes.
Counselor Corn?
No.
Counselor Foster?
Yes.
Counselor Best?
Yes.
Counselor Oropesa?
No.
Counselor Hildenbrand?
No.
Counselor Halverson?
Yes.
Counselor Moore?
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez? Six to three, the motion passes.
Okay, we're back on the amendment that we had, the handheld amendment that we had as amended. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, for item five, the clerk will call the roll. Okay, seeing none, for item five, the clerk will call the roll. On a due pass motion on ordinance number 23-10 as amended.
Councilor Arnold?
Yes.
Councilor Corn?
Yes.
Councilor Foster?
Yes.
Councilor Best?
Yes.
Councilor Oropesa?
No.
Councilor Hildenbrandt?
No.
Councilor Halverson?
Yes.
Councilor Moore?
No.
Councilor Sanchez?
Yeah.
Motion passes six to three.
Okay, next, we're on, let's see, the consent items were done with, so next we go to item 20. Next is the item 27. That's the adoption of rule 23, resolution 23-49 for support for funding applications for development of new skate park. Okay, is there, so Council Lady Arnold, do you care to make a motion? Council Lady Arnold?
Yes, I'm here, I'm sorry, actually, I was reading with a mute on, my apologies. Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion for adoption of resolution 23-49 for support of funding application for development of a new skate park complex.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Council Lady Arnold, seconded by Council Lady, or Councilman Foster, sorry. Okay, okay, yes, Mr. Nahar.
Mayor, Council, good evening. What you have before you is resolution 23-49. Plain and simple, it's just giving political support for allowing the staff, whether it's engineering or any other departments, to put in for applications, to find funding sources for the skate park. Engineering did submit one on Monday, which did not require one, but there's others out there that require a resolution of support, and basically we're looking for funding for the skate park, and until we find funding and agreements, I can't come back with any request for match, but I just want permission to keep on going.
Okay, Council Lady Best?
So there, Louis, there's a lot of unknowns on this, in my perspective. Unknown is where is it going to be in the city? Another one, of course, we don't know the timeline, and the kids said that they would fund it, but we're looking for grants. Who's going to match the grants? If they're 80/20, who's going to match those?
Okay, right now, the grant that we applied for is 100% grant.
Okay, is it, has it?
It's a, the one that we applied for was the one from, and you can see that up there on your screen, that's from the governor, the quality of life, there is no match. You can see, I think, on the third line down towards the right, skate parks is clearly identified, and we're just asking for design money on this application, because skate parks are not my expertise, so.
So this money will go to the folks that they said they have on?
No, the folks would be part of the user groups, and we would have public hearings, public participation like we always do. I mean, I know how the folks feel, that there is, somebody has to manage the grant, somebody has to manage the design process, and that would all follow the normal protocol, and I know if you read the newspaper, it'll be built by 2024. No, if we get this grant, we would have the design completed by 2024, and we would have an intelligent number to go after for construction. And that's all I'm asking. There's always NOOs, notice of opportunities, that come out from the state, from the federal, and with this resolution, again, whether myself or Parks and Recreation wants to go after other grants, it's just, it's just a sign of political support.
So.
Anytime we get a grant and we're awarded, I always have to bring it back to council, I have to bring back the agreement, which specifies any monetary match, if there is monetary match.
So this grant, if we get it, it has to be spent by fiscal year '24?
December 31st, 2024, that is correct.
Okay, so you've got a complete year to find somebody to, it sounds like they've already got somebody rounded up.
Well, and I've sat in and I've talked to those contractors, but those are contractors. I would have to reach out, first I would reach out to the nine vendors that we have on our on-call.
Yeah.
And ask them for a quote, and take it from there.
Okay.
I'm sure that, I mean, the drainage, all that kind of stuff in structures, normal engineering, and then there would be a sub for the skate park for the.
Well, and we don't know where we're going to put it. Are you going to put it out at Cielo Grande and part of that country there since we are?
To me, right now, the idea would, the ideal place would be the skate park, would be, I mean, Cielo Grande.
Just tear it down and build on top of it?
No, you would, again, this is, this is just all speculation.
I like your idea.
Lead the skate park where it's at, move it, move a new skate park on Cielo Grande. Cielo Grande is a recreational complex. It's centrally located, it comes in off from every other places, I mean, Cielo Grande, that's what we have it for, to, in my opinion, you guys have to vote on it, but in my opinion, to increase the recreation and the draw to Cielo Grande.
I just wanted to know kind of the direction we were going, and it makes sense, but again, it's an unknown.
Yeah, it makes sense, and right now it's all speculation until we have the money, and then we get a consultant, and then we do the, we bring in all the users like we always do and get the ideas, we bring it to council to go the direction, but right now, if I had my say in it, we'd build it to Cielo Grande, get an engineer's estimate, get a set of plans, and then I can say four million, five million, two million, because right now it's all speculation. All I'm asking for now is support to go find money, and when I find something, come back and report to you and ask for your vote.
Thank you.
Okay, any further comments? Seeing, okay, Council Lady Moore?
This recreational center, this grant that are there, are we, could we use that for some of the other stuff, like the recreation center and the adult center? Have they went off after some of this grant money that you know of?
The recreation center did not go after this grant particularly. Engineering took, there was only, the city of Roswell could only apply for one grant, one entity, and engineering stepped up and we took it. So we're going after the skate complex. As far as the skate complex, to kind of answer your question, we can use it whatever we want. I mean, the way I picture it, you're going to have the skate complex for all the, for all them to do all their tricks with the skateboards, to do with the BMXs, but then you would also have what I call a flat track for the roller derby, roller derby activities, but also the flat track is your beginning skaters, your beginning skateboards, where they have room without all the tricky stuff to just learn how to do it. And again, being a public park, anybody could use it, just like any other park that we have. Again, we're just going, we're just going after funding, and I'm looking for political support, don't go after funding, and then we'll have the particulars once we have a grant to go forward with, but it would be, it would be monitored by engineering, and we would have the user groups and everything else, just like we do everything. That answer your questions?
Any more questions? Seeing none, clerk will call the roll.
Councilor Arnold?
Yes.
Councilor Corn? Councilor Foster?
Yes.
Councilor Best?
Yes.
Councilor Oropesa?
Yes.
Councilor Hildenbrandt?
Aye.
Councilor Halverson?
Yes.
Councilor Moore?
Yes.
Councilor Sanchez?
Yes.
Thank you. Five of nine affirmative and none on the negative.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Item 27 has passed. Next we have item 29, ordinance 23-14 to advertise for a public hearing to consider adopting proposed ordinance 23-14, ordinance regulating fugitive dust. Councilman Hildebrandt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we authorize to advertise for a public hearing to consider adopting proposed ordinance 23-14 and ordinance regulating fugitive dust.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Hildebrandt, seconded by Councilman Oropesa. Okay, uh, excuse me.
Bless you.
Councilman, or, Mr. Intima.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is a draft ordinance that was initiated by the Community Development Department and Council Hildebrandt. There's some background, the state for a few years now has regulated what's referred to as fugitive dust. This is not dust that has escaped the law, but I think that is a really nice picture, and I will have that on a slide for you next month. The core of it is, this, the way the law defines fugitive dust is more than five minutes of dust that you can visibly see for, over the course of an hour, and in this, it would be coming from construction sites or what are called bulk producers or bulk sources, which is just a fancy way of saying people who keep very large piles of dirt, gravel, things like that. This has taken the state's regulation, modified it slightly, and applied it to the city code. The reasoning for this is that the state has not once enforced it in the city of Roswell, but we happen to have the problem. So what this would do is, it prohibits emissions, and in order to get ahead of the problem, if there, any person who will be on a construction site of more than three, of three quarters of an acre or larger, will have to apply for a permit, and in the permit, they will describe the fugitive dust mitigation methods that they will be employing. If the plan is approved, they get to go ahead, if the plan's not approved, they come back, will ask them to resubmit a plan that will actually mitigate the dust problems. This should not be a significant regulatory burden in particular, because the way that our code is being written is simply adopting the same standard for what this, they're already required to have in their documentation if the state were to do an inspection. There are two enforcement mechanisms. One would be in municipal court with a finding system, and the other would be a civil mechanism where we could red-tag or get an injunction in court. If there's more specifics, I'm happy, questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Okay, Councilman Foster?
Thank you, Mayor. One of the things, so who would be in charge of regulating this?
Community development.
Community development. Okay, one of the things that I've, in the past, we've talked about is, does the city fall under its own ordinance?
Uh, yes, well, yes and no.
So, so our, because the city with our dump, and with our, and with our airport areas, we have areas that are larger than three-quarter acres that produce a lot of fugitive dust. So now how are we going to regulate ourself?
Correct. So the, the, the dump is surrounded by county, so it's.
But the dump is city property, so it's within the city.
Right, but it doesn't fall under construction as defined in the ordinance.
I don't think that, if you're working on, if we're building our city landfill, or we're filling it, and we're covering, that's construction. If you're running a grader, if you're running, that's construction. I don't see how, it's not construction. And, and at our airport, we have graders, we have, the state's in there doing all kinds of dirt work, just training all the time, and they produce fugitive dust. So that's, that's my problem.
That's very easily amended if you're not certain about my legal opinion. I'd simply say we can put in a definition that would say, put in a line in the enforcement provisions saying not applicable to cities' waste management in airport.
It just reeks, my problem is, we put in a regulation about parking lots, and the city is probably the worst owner of some of our parking lots in the city. And so it just gets to that point where our, we need to make sure that if we're holding contractors to it, then we better be holding ourself to the same standard. That's, that's my problem. I agree, most big contractors are going to have a dust mitigation problem or a plan anyway. They have water trucks that spray down water all the time. I just think that we have to be very careful when we start writing, writing laws that we look at ourselves. So I'm, I'm not comfortable with it right now, but maybe later on I can get talked into it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman, Councilor Moore?
I think I had one of the same concerns, because living out, out south, sometimes I can't even see going home for the dust between the dump and that little cement plant where the balls go, that little rock place or whatever, off on like the relief route or whatever, so between those two, there is so much dust, you can't even drive through there when the wind is blowing, from the dump and from those two areas where I think they, they give, I think the people that give you sand and rocks, whatever that place is, is really rough out there. So I think the way we word it should be carefully, I guess not to include us, or, you know, we can't make a law and just leave ourselves out, but I guess we can if we want to. To exclude us, I didn't mean me. So that would be a concern, because some areas out south are really, really bad about the dust, and so, and it's not construction places that, that the dust is coming from out on the south side, it may be on other parts of the town, but like through the relief route and out brasher and all those, all that place where all that dust is coming from is not construction, it's everyday activity that causes those things, but this is just, this ordinance is just for people building something. At the time, while they're building, they have to, they have to keep down their dust, that's what you're saying. So it's not for businesses that, that work on dust, or dirt, I call it dirt, I don't call it.
No, three-quarters of an acre or more who are in, in, in construction or activities that disturb surface area, bulk material handling, or bulk material storage. So I, the cement place, I think, is technically in the county, so this law wouldn't apply to them.
So them too, so that won't count, that's not them either then?
But it's, it's meant to, if they were in the city limits, this is exactly who it would be applied to.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Council Lee Halverson?
I, for one, am very happy to hear, hear that we're putting this forward, because I've had several complaints, mostly from people in the county, but it has to do with the construction and union and country club, and the people that live in the pecan orchards there, they get so much dirt from the construction there when it's windy, so I think we desperately need this, and hopefully it's enforced.
Any further comment? Okay, on a, on a motion for item 29, on a motion by Councilman Hildebrandt, seconded by Councilor Orpreza, to hold a public hearing on item, ordinance number 23-14, if the clerk could call the roll.
Councilor Arnold?
Yes.
Councilor Corn?
Yes.
Councilor Foster?
No.
Councilor Best?
No.
Councilor Oropesa?
Yes.
Councilor Hildenbrandt?
Aye.
Councilor Halverson?
Yes.
Councilor Moore?
Yes.
Councilor Sanchez?
No.
Motion passes six to three.
Okay, thank you. So now we're on item 29, we go to item 14, I believe it's, item 14 was moved.
We're on item 30.
Oh, 28, we didn't, did I miss? Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry, okay, item 30, ordinance 15, authorizing to advertise for public hearing, the ordinance number 23-15, meaning chapter 60 of the Roswell Code for Noise Regulating Nuisances, dash noise, nuisance noises. Councilman Hildebrandt? On thirty, yeah, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we hold a public hearing to consider adopting proposed ordinance twenty-three dash fifteen, amending chapter sixteen of the Roswell Code of Regulating Nuisances and Noise.
Have a motion, we have a second by coun, second by Councilman Orpessa. Okay, coun, uh, Attorney Intima.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, uh, by request, noise ordinance was drafted. Uh, the cit, council had previously adopted noise ordinance a couple of years ago, upon consultation with other attorneys and myself included, um, and with the new development director, Ms. Vickers, who's also a licensed attorney. We all agreed that, as written, the current noise ordinance was not particularly suited to enforcement and might likely fail a challenge in court. As such, we've provided a new ordinance that is a little more explicit and defendable. As you'll see on page two seventy-eight of your packet, prohibited noise levels at certain decibel levels are provided. Below that are a series of exceptions. And hopefully, for the public hearing next month, if you guys are, if you vote that way, we'll, we'll bring a decibel reader in here so that you can get a, a sense of what, how loud certain things are. Uh, exceptions would be for the airport, of course, earth shaking, emergency and civil constructions, general construction work from eight to seven P.M., household power tools from eight to seven P.M., entertainment events, uh, for the schools, athletics, and other school entertainment. It will always be unlawful to be above a hundred ten decibels. Uh, human voices, uh, so, uh, you know, if you wake up in the middle of the night screaming, we're not gonna say, ew. Uh, fireworks displays, uh, on the second, third, fourth, fifth, and sixth of July, and New Year's Eve and New Year's Day, mass transit, parades and protests, of course, mosquitoes, because they're the worst, and garbage collection. There's two ways that we'll be able to prove this in court. Uh, one would be through a sound measurement device. The second, what we'd call a prima, piece of prima facie, facie evidence, is if a person can hear from thirty feet or more of the source, uh, a loud or unusual source for more than thirty feet, or if you can feel the vibrations at more than thirty feet away. Right there, we're talking about that car that drives by your place, and you can feel the bass, and I mean, it might be a bouncing song, but, uh, that's just too much. In any event, um, for the things that don't have exceptions, the administration will be empowered to issue permits, uh, to be louder. However, at no point may the permit go after midnight. Uh, there's a number of criteria at the top of page two eighty-one that have, must be considered when granting a permit. And then remedies for this, uh, it will either be enforced in municipal court under the criminal code, or it may be, um, uh, if that isn't effective, uh, we would seek an injunction in the civil courts.
Okay, either, Councilman Foster.
Thank you, Mayor. On the fireworks display one, is there a way we, it could, we could put a time, like after, you know, after two A.M.? Because the way it's written here, like, if, if it's at five A.M., two A.M., but my problem I have is, when it continues to three A.M., four A.M., and it's still going off on those dates, um, we, we should have a reasonable time on those dates.
Yes, absolutely, Counselor. Uh, this was what got out of committee for your presentation and amendments.
So, so, all right, well, that's, I mean, I know this is for advertising, but so, but coming back, I think that's one of those things I'll suggest for next month, because I think that's one of the problems I have with it. When fireworks are still going off at three A.M., four A.M., and five, you know, it's, it's a little too long. Thank you.
Thank you, and Councilee Best.
Well, if you're gonna do that, why don't you add the days too? Five days after Fourth of July, five days after New Year's Eve, so forth and so on, because you've still got people shooting them off right now. Yeah, but cut them off after that. Okay.
Councilman Foster, I believe then, according to your deal, we would be okay to, we could do the fireworks till two A.M., and after that, we'll use the guns.
That's why I was thinking, New Year's, it's hard to shut it off at midnight, because that's when it starts. But, um, but you know, when you, over the Fourth of July, when it's, they're still going off, and it's just, you know, ungot, yeah, well, actually, that's the thing that's scary. Mortars are not illegal in our city, but bottle rockets are illegal, so I don't understand. Something that can really cause a lot of damage isn't illegal, that's, but, but, oh well. But, um, and those things go off, and that's what's jarring you out of bed at three A.M. and four A.M. So. I yield.
Okay, thank you. Any further comments? Okay, seeing none. Then for item thirteen thirty, uh, ordinance twenty-three fifteen, uh, the motion is to pass item, uh, twenty-three dash fifteen, to advertise for a public hearing on a noise ordinance. Yeah, and so, that's where we be, if the clerk would call the roll.
Counselor Arnold.
Yes.
Counselor Corn. Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Best. Counselor Orpessa.
Yes.
Counselor Hildenbrand. Counselor Howerson.
Yes.
Counselor Moore. Counselor Sanchez.
No.
Motion passes eight to one.
Okay, next we have, now we go back to item fourteen on today's agenda. Items fourteen and thirty-two are very similar. And this, they deal with proceeds on roof repair and things repaired, and, uh, so item fourteen, this is to approval, to allocate nine hundred and forty-nine thousand and three dollars to Allen Roofing using I T B twenty-three dash zero one nine for insurance roof repairs. And that would be, uh, Councilman, uh, Corn. Do we have a motion for item fourteen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Are you ready?
Yes, sir.
Okay, item fourteen is to approve, uh, thousand, three dot, insurance repair.
Okay, we have motion by Councilman Corn, a second by Councilman Foster. Okay, and so Councilman, uh, Corn would, excuse me, I'm sorry, go ahead, Jenna. Jenna will explain.
Perfect, so, um, this is your request, the, uh, amount of money of nine hundred and forty-nine thousand, three dollars, uh, to hire Allen Roofing, using I T B twenty-three dash zero one nine for insurance roof repairs. These repairs, uh, are a result of hail damage, uh, claim in twenty-twenty-one for buildings ten eighty-one A, ten eighty-three A, and seven thirty-five that are requiring replacement due to that damage. Um, I'm happy to report that I did speak to the insurance representative today, and they have given us the green light to go ahead with these repairs, um, along with, uh, the ability to receive our depreciation value, um, at, by completion of the job. So we will, we have been guaranteed that we will get the depreciation, um, getting actual replacement cost value on these jobs.
Okay, Councilman Foster.
Thank you, Mayor. One of the reasons I wanted to pull this is just because the, the amount. When we're, when we're dealing with a million dollars, it's kind of nice to talk about why. Um, the other one was the historic portion of this, because this, a lot of accusations came about thi- this money. And I just wanted to make sure, this money, uh, came to, we got the check for this money in April of twenty-two?
Correct.
Okay, so, and so, uh, a lot of things were said about this money being thrown around. Well, it stayed in the airport fund, no one moved it. And so I just wanted to make sure that we know that the money was in twenty-two, April of twenty-two, after this administration had, uh, changed, all the election had changed hands, so it stayed where it was, and...
So I would defer, obviously, to budget for that, uh, because I wasn't in control of budget at that time, but it is my understanding that it was given to us, um, at the time of the receipt of the check in twenty-twenty-two, um, the cur, the, at the time, the leadership at the airport chose to not approach that project, being so close to the end of the fiscal year. The chain of, of custody as of the next fiscal year, um, I can't answer for, but I will defer to Janie for that.
Uh, I can, I can, uh, verify that, uh, the money that came in was deposited into the airport fund. When it wasn't used to that fiscal year, it stayed in the cash balance for the airport fund, and that's where it remains to date.
And, 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 like you said, it came in at near the end of the year. We've also had a turnover at our leadership at the airport, and that's why this is, I mean, it shouldn't take this long. But that's why it's taken this long, and now we're at the point where we're finally gonna get some roofs repaired, which is a good thing.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I yield.
Any further comments? Seeing none, then for item fourteen, we would, uh, ask the clerk, clerk to call the roll for approval of this, to spend nine hundred and forty-nine thousand and three dollars to Allen Roofing to fix, uh, uh, roofing using the I T B twenty-three dash zero one nine for insurance roof repairs. Clerk, call the roll.
Mr. Mayor, we can do a voice vote on this one.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody saying, voting no, please say no. Okay, so that'd be by a vote of nine, and if there are any negative, item fourteen's passed. Next, we have item thirty-two, which is extremely very simpler, simple. We could go to item thirty-two, please. And that is for, item thirty-two, this is for Councilman Corn, approval to allocate seven hundred and forty-six thousand, one hundred and sixty-five dollars and twenty-five cents to custom correct, construction for I T B twenty-three dash nineteen for insur, insurance roof repairs. Councilman, uh, Corn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I move that. The allocate forty-six, six hours and twenty-five cents to cut, for insurance roof repair, and this lady will fill us in on the details.
Okay, so, motion by Councilman Corn, second by Councilman Foster. Jenna.
This is a little bit of a sweet repeat, changing buildings and custom construction as the contractor. Um, this also, uh, was a hail damage claim from twenty-twenty-one, including buildings seven thirty-four, one thousand, one thousand two, one thousand forty-nine, fifteen thirty-four, and fifteen thirty-five. Um, I also was granted the green light on this from the insurance, stating that they will be paying replacement cost value, so we will obtain our depreciation value.
Okay, so this is real similar to the last one. Any comments? Okay, the, uh, clerk would, uh, have a voice vote. All those in favor of passing item thirty-two, the approval to allocate seven hundred and forty-six thousand, one hundred and sixty-five dollars and twenty-five cents to custom construction for insurance roof repairs. If, uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say, oppose, say no. If I have a vote of nine, and if there are any negative, item thirty-two is duly passed.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have public participation on non-agenda items. We have two individuals, I believe, that were here to speak. We have, uh, no, no, we have, Mark Brooks is here to speak. No, no, wait, let me, I'm getting it goofed up. Uh, item twenty-eight, we had Kim Harris. Oh, they already did, okay, well, oh, this is, oh, I got him back. Okay. Mr. Brooks, non-agenda items, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, uh, members of the council. I'm Mark Brooks, I'm with the Utility Workers Union of America. Uh, we have with us tonight also our elected leaders from Local Fifty-One here in Roswell, and many of the members of our union, who, as you know, uh, work very hard for the city of Roswell every day. City council knows that we represent dedicated hourly workers, blue collar workers in this city, who deliver services every day to the residents of Roswell, uh, including things like delivery of, delivery of clean drinking water every day, wastewater services, sanitation, streets, parks, transit, and all the other workers who work hard every day, uh, to make, to help make Roswell a great place to live. Um, we're conscious that the, the amendment to the budget that council passed in July called for the city manager to make a recommendation to council at your next meeting in October about whether or not to amend the budget, uh, in order to, um, provide for the delivery of essential quality services to city residents by investing properly in living wages for your employees who deliver those services. I shared this observation with, uh, finance committee members last week. There's an important principle enshrined in the const, the preamble to the constitution of my organization, the U W A Constitution, which provides that we, as an organization, are dedicated not only to standing up for the rights of public service employees, but also for the rights of the public to receive high-quality, essential public services. We're really proud of the fact that, um, men and women who founded our union eighty years ago had the wisdom to understand that these two things go together. And we would encourage the city of Roswell to also embrace this same principle. You know, the single most important function of local government is to provide basic services to your residents. And yet, the city budget as passed fails to do that by failing to invest properly in living wages, uh, for the city workers who deliver these services. The budget as passed eliminates entirely the step increases for city workers, and also cuts, uh, cost of living adjustment to a meager, bare-bones one percent. This despite the fact that the city of Roswell is already far behind every other community, surrounding community in, in our region, according to a wage study that the city conducted recently, and despite the fact that, of course, inflation last year was nearly nine percent, not, not one percent. As a result, numerous jobs in the city continue to go unfilled because of unreasonably low wages, and dedicated workers in the city have to decide every week whether or not they're going to have to give up jobs that they love, delivering essential services to the people of Roswell, in order to take better-paying jobs, in order to take care of their families. So, the good news, uh, and I shared this, uh, in a, in a fact sheet that we've given to each of the council members, the good news is that gross receipts tax collections continue to be very strong, they continue to outpace substantially what we consider to be the unreasonably low, um, G R T projections that were included in the budget. So we invite council to please review, uh, uh, the fact sheet as we present it to you. We also ask you to please consider the fact that the budget already bakes in nearly thirteen million dollars in the reserve fund, uh, which, of course, is three times what state law requires. And the purpose of the reserve fund, as everyone here knows, is to provide kind of a backstop, insurance, in the event of, uh, a shortfall in G R T collections in any given year. Point being, there's really no reason to cut into your city's services, to cut your city workers to the bone by unreasonably lowballing the G R T project, projections in your budget. In short, we would urge that Roswell does not lack the resources necessary to properly invest in services for your residents by failing to properly invest in your workers. Uh, what is needed is for the city council to prioritize the delivery of high-quality, essential services to the residents. Uh, we urge you, for that reason, next month, to please do the right thing, amend the budget, to provide, to restore the step increases for city workers, and to provide for a, a more reasonable cost of living adjustment for city workers, and therefore to keep faith... and therefore to keep faith with your residents. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks. Is there anyone else who would care to speak before the council on non-agenda items? Seeing none. We're getting almost close to the bewitching hour. Is there? Do we have, uh, any other items that anyone would care to bring before the council? Okay, then I imagine that we would stand adjourned. Thank you all very much for attending. Mr. Intimo, I hope you feel better. Thank you very much.